Everybody, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Village Board meeting for June 14th. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces serving throughout the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight is fiscal year 2018-2019 reorganization. Desiree, can you start the show? Please read the reorganization.
Certainly. The first is to appoint the consultants for the village for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Engineers would be H2M Architect and Engineering. Attorneys for the village, Faric Lynch McCartney and Nugent, Burke Mealy-Golden and Norton, Cornfield, Rue, Newman and Simeone. Planner for the village, Nelson Pope and Voorhees, and attorney for the ZBA, Michael Donnelly.
Is that it?
For that part, yes.
Okay.
Need a motion in a second for that part.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next action that is needed is an authorization for the engineer to file applications for all regulatory agencies as required on behalf of the village.
Motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, the mayor has to name his deputy mayor.
I name Timothy Egan.
Okay. Next, you need a motion in a second to authorize me to enroll the village as members with the New York State Conference of Mayors, the Orange County Association of Towns, Villages and Cities, the Orange County Municipal Planning Federation, the Orange County Ward Authority, which is MUNNA, and the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce.
Motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next motion needed is to designate the Times-Howell Record as the official newspaper for the village.
Motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next motion is to adopt the investment policy, the designation of the depository, and audit of abstracted vouchers policy as presented.
Motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sorry, buddy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is to, a motion to reimburse members of the village government and its employees when on official business or duty of the village, the rate established annually by the Internal Revenue Services for the use of their personal vehicles, which includes gas and wear and tear.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next is to reimburse employees not more than $50 per day for any food purchase while attending a board-approved conference under a meeting that is held for an entire day and is for village-related issues, if not included in the registration cost. Alcohol will not be reimbursed, and fully completed receipts must be submitted.
Motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So next is to establish the following Village Board committees: Liaison to the Town Board, Mayor Queenan and Trustee Egan; Liaison to the Planning Board, Trustee Egan and Flood; Liaison to the Zoning Board, Trustee Kraus and Michalijak; Liaison to the Fire Department, Trustee Egan and Michalijak; Liaison to the Water Sewer Department, Mayor Queenan and Trustee Michalijak; Liaison to the Building Department, Mayor Queenan and Trustee Kraus; Liaison to the Highway Department, Trustee Flood and Trustee Michalijak; Employee Liaison, Mayor Queenan and Trustee Flood; Insurance Liaisons, Trustee Flood and Trustee Kraus; and Grant Writing Research, Trustees Kraus and Trustee Egan.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And next is to appoint the following individuals: Appeal Officers, Officer for Foil Requests, Mayor Queenan; Procurement Officer, Mayor Queenan; Zoning Board, Karen Unger with a term to expire May 31st, 2023; Planning Board, Christopher Gerver with a term to expire May 31st, 2023; and Fire Police, George Suet, Christopher Salvo, and Dennis Tinney, and that's a one-year term.
Motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the next is a motion to designate Maria Hunter as chairperson of the Planning Board, and Karen Unger as chairperson of the Zoning Board.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next is to adopt your meeting dates and your meeting public comment procedures as presented, which is the same as it has been the past few years.
Motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next is to adopt your procurement policy as presented.
Motion?
Motion. A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the last one is to adopt your feast schedule for 2017-18, which is the same as it was when it was amended earlier this year.
Okay, motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that's it?
Done?
Yep.
Thank you, you did a wonderful job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, that completes the reorg. Next up, motion to accept our minutes of our meeting held May 29, 2018.
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Des, can you please read Abstract Number One?
Abstract One contains vouchers 180001 through 180094, and totals $284,763.48.
Motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Excuse me.
Who's that?
Neil. Neil, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve Fire Department equipment request 2018-16 totaling approximately $1,847.50 for the purchase of rescue gloves.
I'll make the motion.
A second. Go ahead, buddy, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Old business, there is no old business to discuss, new business. Okay, we have a situation here. The person that cleans Village Hall has resigned. She's been doing this for many years, even prior to the formation of the village. She's submitted her letter of resignation effective May 31st, so she's already gone. I feel we have a choice, I feel we have no choice but to request for RFP, request for proposals to contract an outside cleaning service to handle the village offices at Firehouse, Water and Sewer, and the Highway. But a couple of thoughts before we go into that. I mean, we may also want to consider hiring a part-time janitor-type position, I don't know what it'd be called in civil service, depending on the price of what these services would charge. So I mean, I have no idea what these services would charge, so until I have that information, it's hard to make this decision. But I think there are a lot of other things that need to be done around that, you know, this janitor-type person could do. So that's something we need to consider. I'd like to hear the opinion of some of the trustees tonight to kind of get an idea of which direction we should go in.
I think we need to figure out what it's going to cost us for each option, and if we can have a janitorial position that can handle other building maintenance-type issues like bulbs and that kind of thing, that would probably be helpful, but I'd really want to see the cost involved.
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear.
What?
Do you want to say that again?
Do I want to say that again?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, basically what I said was that it could be useful to have a janitorial-type person, not only for cleaning, but for minor maintenance issues like light bulbs and things of that nature, but before we make a decision on that, I would want to see pricing, whatever the cost of it.
Well, for a janitor, I assume the pay would be about $15 an hour?
Well, you'd have to, we'd have to establish the position, I'd have to reach out to civil service, get a job description. I'm pretty sure it's an exempt position, no test for it. You'd have to decide whether you want it to be part-time or full-time, and what your, how on the stepping grade he would fall into. He would probably fall under your non-union because he wouldn't be part of the Water Sewer or the Highway Department, which are the only two unions you have. So we do have a non-union stepping grade, which our building department is under. And we'd have to, you know, decide where that would fall in, and then, you know, with the budget we have for buildings and grounds, for cleaning purposes, we budgeted $400 a month, which is what we were paying for the individual who was currently doing it. She, that covered all supplies as well. She got all the paper supplies and cleaning supplies out of that money as well, so that was what she got paid as a contract.
So for $400 a month, we had a cleaning person, including supplies?
Yes. Correct.
But this person, it really wouldn't be apples to apples, because this person would be doing minor building maintenance also.
If we were to hire, the RFP that I prepared and presented to you, which I got, Montana Monroe just did an RFP for the same thing, so she sent me her file, and I tailored it to our needs, because there includes a whole lot more buildings and facilities.
Are we able to put out the RFP and then not select anything, just for informational purposes?
Correct, yes. The RFP says in there that the village board has a right to reject any and all bids.
I suggest we do that.
So it's there, it's just...
So that we can at least have numbers to compare.
Yeah, I'd like to see the numbers, too. I mean, the one thing with hiring someone, that's the gift that keeps on giving.
Right.
You know, it's, you've got your ongoing salary, and then you also, particularly if it's full-time, you've got the fringe benefits and everything on top of that.
And we...
So I'd like to see a comparison.
And we added the Water Sewer Building and the, I mean, Water Sewer Office and the Highway Office, because currently they are not being done.
Yeah, so I mean...
So we're not comparing?
No.
Apples to apples?
Not at all. And actually, we had a pretty good deal with this person, and we probably wouldn't get a deal like that again. So it's probably going to be a lot more expensive, but I agree with Tim. I think going out for an RFP, at least it gives us a number to work with. We got an idea, and then we could figure out how much it would cost to hire. I mean, I prefer to go part-time, because I'd rather not pay, you know, benefits and things like that, but, you know, we'll see what happens. I mean, I would at least want to start part-time, and...
We should, you know, if we're looking at the possibility of an internal position, we'd probably need a job description also, so that we can...
Oh, yeah.
We'd go with civil service.
Yeah, civil service has all job descriptions.
Okay. So with that, then, I'm going to ask for a motion to authorize the village clerk. Is everybody finished? I mean, anybody else want to add to anything to this? No? All right, motion to authorize the village clerk to advertise for janitorial services for various village offices beginning July 2018 through May 2020.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion, even though we discussed it enough, I think, but, no? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that concludes our business for this evening. I see we have a large crowd here tonight, which is usually unusual for us, but anyway, I'm going to go out to the public for public comment first. So anybody in the first row? Anybody in the second row? Anybody in the third row? Anybody in the fourth row?
Green light.
Okay, we got green light. Greens go. Hi, I'm Charlie Newt, I'm a 36-year-old resident, 36-year resident of, I wish I was 36, of Central Valley and Highland Mills. I came here today just to get some clarification and insight on last month's meeting, the May 29th meeting, and there were some issues that were regarding, first of all, you know, you were mentioning the Highland Mills Village Office expansion, and I saw that you said the Woodbury Fire Chiefs asked for two new existing, two new bays, and I know you need the office space, so there's no question about needing office space. And I was just curious, is there, why is there a reason for two new bays? Are you buying new equipment?
No. First of all, the chiefs have been asking for an expansion of that building for quite some time. We kind of like, really didn't, you know, really look into it. However, as you noted, we do need more office space. So logic has it, to get the most bang for our buck, would be, in order to add on, we would need to put something underneath. So, you know, it would allow for expansion of the Fire Department and things like that. So the logical thing we thought of to do was to go with the expansion of two bays and put the office space above it, because the current bays, the structure there is not suited to put another floor on top of that.
Okay.
So it would be a lot of expense. We felt the simplest way to do this, and we're looking at the cheapest way to do this, would be to put two bays on the north side of the building, which would, then we would connect our offices that we currently have onto that side, and we could have the building department over there. And also retain the meeting room and things like that, that could be used for the community.
The reason I was asking that, because I know it's not cheap to put, you know, I would say it's going to be 1.5 million, somewhere around there.
You're correct.
You know?
Right.
Just based on what, you're going to have to, prevailing rate you're going to have to deal with, and...
Well, we're waiting for the numbers now. Like, we're just looking into this.
Okay.
We're exploring this option, and, you know, nothing is in concrete, and we did hire a firm to evaluate and design the office and the bays and everything, and to give us a price. And then at that point, we'll decide, you know, if it's feasible to move forward or not.
Well, the reason I was asking that, and I don't know if you were looking for alternatives, you know, we have the Central Valley Firehouse, I'm a member of the Central Valley Fire Company, and it's underutilized right now, you know? We have a truck there that's, we've got the brush truck, and we've got the UTV. We've got one full bay that can put probably a 70-foot truck in there. And then we also have the rescue truck, which I guess eventually you guys will be selling, it looks like, you know, because it's really not being used anymore.
Well, no decisions were made yet, so...
Right, but I just assumed, because it's been, you know, it hasn't been utilized in a couple of months. But anyway, what, I had a suggestion, and maybe when you talk to your architects, you know, I know you have the space upstairs where you have your meeting hall up there.
Right.
You know, we have a beautiful, not a beautiful, but we've got, we've got a meeting hall that can hold probably about 80 people, I believe. My, and I'm sure that there's a couple of members here that we'd be willing to let the town and village to utilize that space if you wanted. You could convert your upstairs meeting room to office space, the office space that you need. I'm not sure how many square foot it is, but I would say it's probably 2,000 square feet up there, somewhere, you know, the office space up there. And with some modifications to our house, where you might want to have to put an elevator in, and we probably need to do something with it. We do have air conditioning units that may work, you know, that may do the trick for it, but I know we really don't have much heat up there. So there would be a few things, though I would ask you to consider that down the road when you do do that, because I'm sure the members here would be more than willing to work with you guys to utilize the house.
Charlie, just to clarify, because I don't want to get you wrong in the minutes.
Okay.
And I want to make sure I understood it correctly. So you're suggesting Central Valley Fire Company upstairs for meetings?
For meetings for your meetings.
And then the Highland Mills upstairs for office space?
For office space.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood you correctly. Thank you.
Okay, that's one thing. The next comment after the meeting minutes...
Well, could I respond to that first?
Yeah, sure.
Because, you know, I'm getting old, and I can't remember all this stuff, you know? Everything's on the table right now.
Right.
So I mean, it's something to consider, we never considered that.
Right.
Being that the Central Valley houses are privately owned by the Central Valley Fire Company. See, the Highland Mills is owned by the village, so that's kind of why we look at that the way we do.
Right.
But, I mean, listen, we could take a look at that, you know, as another option. Like I said, we're in the exploring stages right now, and this is our first stab at this, going out, you know? Because at one time, we were interested in doing something with the town, that doesn't seem to be in the cards, so we're kind of going on our own right now, and that was like our first thing we thought of, and, you know, we're willing to look at other options. We're not locked into one option.
The reason I said it, I was a real estate manager for Verizon for 33 years, and my last eight years, I was a space planner, where I was relocating people, not very happily from one location to another. And everywhere I went, people, they said they needed a conference room, like such as you have there.
Right.
And they kept on saying they needed, and then when we did studies, 99% of the time, the conference room was just sitting there idle. So if you could utilize that space for you, and maybe, I don't know if you could fit the town in there, too. That's up, that's your call, but I would suggest, or would recommend, maybe you'd like to take a look at it.
Okay.
Just one comment, and I hate to be the wet blanket on that, but having dealt with both the state and the county on renovations of buildings, you know, when we looked at the school building in Central Valley and stuff, is no state or county money can be, would be available to us through grants or anything if, to build on, or do anything in a privately-owned building, which would mean the elevator and stuff would have to be done with taxpayer money. And again, that would be renovations to a privately-owned building, not a municipally-owned building, so there would be, that would be some roadblocks involved in that.
I understand that.
Maybe roadblocks are not the best way to put it, but that would be things that would have to be worked out if we were to pursue it. I'm not saying it's not worth it.
But I can guarantee you, Neil, that it's not going to be $2 million.
Yeah, but I'm just saying...
You know, I'm talking elevator and probably HVAC work, and maybe some little bit ADA work in the bathrooms. You might get under $100,000, and you get it all done, and it's yours.
Yeah, but Charlie, what Neil is saying is that we're not allowed to spend taxpayers' money on private property, that's what he's saying.
Even if you do a lease, you can't, you can't do leases?
Well, like I said...
Particularly leased buildings. The county was very clear on that when I...
I don't know the answer to that.
Right, I'm just, you know, I know the county leased a ton of space when they, when their building went down, so they leased the building.
Yes, they did.
And then all of a sudden, they went back to one building, and I know it cost them a lot more money to put one building versus having those six buildings.
No, I don't know the answer, and we'll look into that, too.
Just a suggestion, that's all.
We could, we could lease it.
We could lease it, but we can't do public improvements to it.
But as far as the renovations, to make the upstairs handicap accessible and stuff with an elevator.
Right, but you could lease it, and we could, we could rent it to you, and then we could build it into the rent.
That's what I was just going to...
You know what I mean? That's the ability.
If we built the cost of the renovations into the lease price. I have a question, Charlie. You said it fits about 80 people up there. What's the square footage, you have any idea?
Anybody know, Don?
Just curious, I mean, obviously something we need to know.
I know by fire code, I think it's...
For comparison purpose.
By fire code, I think we have 80, 85 people that can go upstairs.
So this is, that's about the size of this room, based on that sign there, and...
I would think, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I think without the, without the offices, you probably include the offices in this room, you know, so you're going all the way back. Yeah, so you're talking about everything, so...
Charlie, under that scenario of the other more members mentioned, in that case, it would be a case where Central Valley Fire would have to front the money to have those renovations done, and then get paid back over time by building it into the cost of the rent of the lease.
We'd have to take a look at that.
So that would have...
Because I wasn't aware that you couldn't, couldn't do that, but we could, you know, somebody, I'm sure a bank would fund us the money if they know you've got a lease for 10 years, and you're going to get that money, you know, in the lease, you know?
Let me ask you a question, just, and I'm just...
And I'm just saying, I'm just talking as a member.
Right.
I haven't gone to all the members, but that was my idea, that was my idea.
And I'm just talking as a member of this board.
I can't see Mike, that's why.
Yeah, I know, I agree, the poll's very awkward. And I mean, I'm not, I'm not offering this, but I'm just throwing things out there, being that we're going to talk about things, you know, options and things. I mean, you know, this could be accomplished, but, you know, if the village could buy the building and do something like that. Now, I don't know if the Central Valley Fire Company would be into that, but then they would have the same benefits that the Highland Mills Fire Company has.
Right.
So, listen, I mean, that's something you guys could think about, because if we were to pursue that, that would be in our best interest, because, to be honest with you, we really feel if we're going to be paying, you know, leasing property or paying rent every month, it would be more, being that we're going to be there permanently, it's not like, you know, we're only going to do it for six years, and we're moving down to Carolina like a lot of people.
Right.
We'll be here forever, really, so we, it would make more sense for us to purchase a property rather than lease it. But again, like I said, everything's on the table, we're looking, we're willing to look at anything.
But your lease today is pretty favorable, if you think about the square footage that you are leasing.
Right.
You know, it's roughly, I think it's probably less than 3,000 a month that you're leasing it for. You can't build for that type of money, I can tell you that, you know, for the space that you need and the bays you need, so it's both, you know? So it's not just the upstairs, it's the downstairs, you know, you're paying for the downstairs, that's what you're paying for today, you know?
So, but I understand all that.
But the bill of bay, that's going to cost you $2,36,000 a year, say it is, or roughly.
Yeah, but that's every year.
Yeah, but look at, look at the payback. When I worked, if we didn't get three years' payback on a move, we weren't going to fund it. Three years' payback is 108,000, somewhere around there, versus $2 million. The payback, you're not going to beat it, I can tell you right now, if you do it, if you put it on paper, you can't beat it.
But we would have an asset, you know?
Yeah, an asset that's worth, I don't know.
I don't know either, I'm just saying, we would have to look into everything, you know?
Right, right.
I'm not...
And that's why people lease.
I know, I'm not discounting it.
Because they don't want to control the asset.
I'm just saying...
They don't want to be responsible for the building, you know?
Right, I'm not discounting this, I'm just saying, we would look at all the options, and we would, you know, we would do an analysis on it.
It's just a suggestion on my part, like I said, it's not, it's not the company.
And I think it's...
It was just something I thought of, you know, while I was sitting at home, not doing anything after the golf outing, you know?
So you're not, you're not ready to sign your dotted line?
Before the golf, I'm, that's tomorrow.
Before the golf outing, yeah, okay.
And Charlie, just a second, it's good, because this gives us a chance to talk back and forth and think of other options.
Right.
That's a good idea.
It's just an option, that's all, I just figured I'd throw it out to you.
Do communication, yeah.
One other, there was like two other things that were mentioned, and it had to do with, you had discussions regarding the occasions that we, that Central Valley people were visited and discussed over about the closing of the house, and I'm not, I'm not saying anything about the manpower issues right now or anything like that, but in all honesty, I know, I'm almost a member, I think, four years, and Desiree could probably correct me, I'm not sure if it's four years or five years, but it's somewhere in there, because I'm losing my, my brain cells, anyway. I never saw any member while I was there. Now, I don't attend every meetings, but I don't, I didn't see any members come down[1565.75] but I don't, I didn't see any members come down and speak to the Central Valley, maybe at Central Valley.
First of all, a couple of things, Charlie. I gotta correct you. I was down there, and you were there one night, by the pool table, and we were talking about this. Nobody's gonna back me up on that, because they were there, too. No, there wasn't.
I don't, it's possible, but I...
Well, listen, my memory is getting bad, but I can remember it.
You did say, or was implied, that it was many times over many hours...
I've been down there about five times over the last ten years. I mean, that may not seem a lot to you, but I've been down there to talk to you guys, okay? And, and I mean, I don't know why you're making an issue out of this, but I didn't talk, never once did I ever talk about closing that building.
I'm not saying you were, but I'm just...
Well, you brought it up when you brought up the subject. You said about closing the building. Never once did I bring that up.
Well, I'm, I may, you may have been there, and I miss, you know, missed it out on that one time.
No, you, actually, Charlie, you were there, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
One time in four years, okay. Just asking. You know, you, you mentioned staffing with us and all, and, and I understand we've had problems with staffing, and I know you, you tried to address it, and there was an issue, a special circumstance that happened, where the, the person that was assigned down there is no, was no longer a member. But have you considered anything else since then? You know, bringing another person in, another car? One, two, not one, one and two, but maybe three, or another officer, because right now, we really don't have any officers down there.
Well, we have three chiefs now.
Right.
And...
And, and, and while we're on, on that subject, I hate this.
Stay on this side.
You know, today, people apply for the, a membership for the, for the firehouse. Would they consider that every third application would, would, would be assigned to Central Valley, so we could bring our numbers up? When you take a look at the town and the village itself, Central Valley is a much smaller hamlet than Highland Mills. I would say it's, what, population is three to four to one versus Central Valley?
Yeah, well, I, I think this is, this, this can be discussed, but I think we need the chiefs and the officers involved in that discussion in a room.
Okay.
I think it's unfair for me to have, to make any statement on those lines, because we normally leave the operations of the fire department to the chiefs and officers.
Okay.
You know, and all fairness to us, so.
Right.
But I don't mind having that discussion. If you wanna schedule something, we could have it, so.
Well, I, I'm around, so whenever you, you can...
Well, I'm, I'm around most of the time, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I just gotta figure out when the chiefs are around.
Okay.
I just want to go back to the office thing for a second. You know, the, the officer selections are made based on the bylaws that were crafted by the warrant board, which is made up of members of both houses.
Mm-hmm.
And it's very clearly spelled out as to, A, what the process is, and B, what the qualifications are.
Right, I understand that.
So, I, I'm, maybe I'm not clear on what you're asking for, Charlie, but it sounded like...
Well, if, if we have three cars in, in, in Woodbury Fire Department, could in one car be assigned as an officer for Central Valley, and maybe we can get our membership up?
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
Maybe we can get...
Can he achieve?
No, I think what he's asking for is a representative of the officer for...
Representative of somebody that's there, you know, so if we, we do report to the house, he's there, or, or she's there. It doesn't matter who, you know?
Well, what I would suggest, then, is, and I've suggested this several times to the chiefs and to the officers, that the warrant board meet at least quarterly to discuss potential changes to the bylaws, because that's where that would have to be driven from. You know, we can't just override the bylaws. Village law is pretty clear on that, and the bylaws are pretty clear as to what we can do and what the department is responsible to do, and what the members of each house are responsible to do.
But you are the overseers of the, of...
That is correct. We approve appointments.
Or you could recommend that we, we take a look at this, no?
Absolutely, and I have recommended personally as liaisons to the fire department, that we look at refreshing the bylaws at least on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, we're doing our, we're doing our own houses right now.
Right, but I'm talking about the department bylaws that, that cover this subject, this very subject, as well, as well as many others. I think it's, you know, very important that bylaws be looked at on a regular basis to bring new and interesting and fresh ideas to the table, so that they can be discussed amongst the people that serve on the warrant board and make those decisions. We don't serve on the warrant board. I sat in on those bylaws committee meetings as an observer and made suggestions, but we don't craft those bylaws. You guys do. We approve them.
Yeah, I, I've been voted to be on the warrant board, so I believe...
Good.
When they do schedule a meeting, I hope to be around.
I, I'd love to see a meeting scheduled, and I'd love to participate in those meetings, so that we can have, you know, good conversations.
Well, if we do schedule a meeting, and I have no problem scheduling one, I have to run it by the chiefs, see when they're available. It'll most likely be in the evening.
Yeah.
So, we could have members of, we can only have two village board members there, so.
Okay. It'd be Buddy and Tim.
Be Buddy and Tim, because they're liaisons.
Right.
If I go, one of them couldn't go, so, but, you know, I, I'm not...
So, you, you don't gang up on me, is that why?
No, I, we would want the chiefs...
Open meetings.
Open meetings, well, if we had more than three members, there would be a quorum, it would be a...
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. See, I'm learning something.
So, we, we would, if we set up this meeting, we would lay it all out up front, who's gonna be attending, and everybody's gonna know who's attending, and...
Maybe we could hash it out.
Yeah, we can get it done.
I think it'd be great. I've been asking for that for years, quite frankly.
I'll, I'll be willing to be there, and maybe I'll grab somebody else. We can grab another member to go.
You guys can have as many people as you want. We can only have two.
Just need two, yeah.
Well, we don't want it crazy, because we want it to be productive, so, yeah. So, we'll probably wanna have at least two of the chiefs there.
Right.
And I don't, I, on their recommendation, would officers and things like that should be there.
Right.
But, you know, I'll try to set it up for the next, within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one issue, one more thing, not...
I, I just need to clarify one more thing. I wanna make sure I get you right here. When applications come in for membership...
Right. Do they come specifically stating Highland Mills?
Well, that's what I was, you want the chiefs to say who goes where?
I would like that, you know, or we could do, agree to a number, one out of four gets assigned, so we could at least get our membership up.
I, I thought that the, and I'm only asking because I enter the information, doesn't the person who applies, apply for a specific firehouse?
They may or may not, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
You know, they, they could be on there. I've heard, this is just hearsay, but I've heard where it's come in, and they said they wanted to go to Central Valley, and all of a sudden, it was Highland Mills. Now, I'm not, this is hearsay, but, you know, maybe we can clarify that process a little bit better at that meeting, which would be great, too.
Or even modify the application to specify, right.
You know, or modify it that you will be assigned at the chief's discretion.
As I understand it, though, this meeting would be to come up with suggestions to present to the warrant board. Well, we may have the answers, but we can't implement them. The warrant board has to put that in writing.
But it's at least something that the chiefs would agree to, and, and, and all the members would agree to, you know? So...
Great suggestions.
Yeah, the last, the last one is, you were mentioning about the gardens.
Right.
And maybe possibility putting a, a station down there, and my only comments on that, and it's, whether it's good or bad, you say you were gonna move Station Two down there. It's a, I, I know, I know it's, but, but I just wanted to get my two cents in, if you don't mind, that's it. You know, the, the majority of our, are our members are really in Highland Mills, and we got a little bit in, in Central Valley. You're gonna, think of putting a substation down, down there, where the gardens is probably marketing more towards young professionals and people that are, that are older than you and me, you and I, Mike, I should say, you know?
I feel bad you included me, man.
And those people, due to either family or career goals, are not gonna be volunteering down there. And then, what I would have a problem with personally, and I'm the furthest, I think I'm the furthest away from any of the houses where I live on Buena Vista, is that us trying to get down there without having a truck that has the alarms and the sirens, you know, I, I, first of all, I can't break the laws. I can't go through traffic lights, and I won't, you know? I'll do the speed limit, because God forbid I do get into a car accident. At least here, I think I might be covered if I'm, I'm following all the rules.
Right.
But, you know, you go through that new intersection, and who knows how that's gonna work? I, I think there might be an issue with that, so I would just think, I would hope you would consider that if you, if you do, go down there.
I'm sorry, I keep going over to the mic, and then the poll's in the way. But let me, let me clarify that. I, I mean, what I was talking about, you know, when, operationally for a fire department, obviously, coverage, it's, it's almost like you wanna have firehouses strategically located to provide the service. I mean, we're already thinking about having a highway garage down there. We're only maybe two trucks in it, so during a snowstorm, instead of reporting to the normal highway department, those drivers would go directly down there and start plowing. Now, I don't even know if we're gonna do that, and I'm just trying to think of the future and what kind of plans we have to start thinking about with the highway department, fire department. Now, the fire departments, like you brought up, very good points, and we already thought it out, that, you know, if you're gonna be rushing down there, you're better off being in a fire emergency vehicle, lights, and everything, and siren. However, the reality of coverage down there, logistically, you know, we, we can't, yeah, we wanna cover that area, but can, are we in a position to cover that area realistically?
I agree.
That's what we have to face, and we need to come up with a solution like that, or we need to make other arrangements. And I don't know what those arrangements are. I'm trying to think down, I mean, hopefully, this is five, six, ten years down the road, but now, we better start thinking about that now, because in the future, that's gonna come up on us very, very quick. And I, I think we need to start looking at how we're gonna handle that. Is it gonna be a joint venture with the Monroe Fire District? I mean, I don't know.
That's what I, I would think.
Yeah, but...
And I may not go over well with the members in, in Woodbury.
I know, but...
It's, it, that build, that brand-new building is a lot closer than, than we are.
I know that, and, but that's why we gotta start thinking about that now, in the event that whatever happens.
I agree.
We already have a precedent for that, in that we have an inter, or intermunicipal agreement with that district to cover their portion of the thruway, so.
Right.
We're already doing something like that, and I was thinking about that earlier in the week. I think it's a great idea.
Actually, we, we cover their portion of the thruway.
That's what I said.
Oh.
Yeah, but that was my thoughts on it when I, when I saw that, because I know the problem trying to get down there.
At least first, you ain't worrying. You know, this, look, it, nothing's...
I know you're in a planning stage, but it's, it's something I thought of, and I, I just felt I should at least give you my experience by being the furthest person in the Woodbury Fire Department.
Would an armored car work for you, Charlie?
Huh?
An armored car with lights for you?
With a really big bumper.
I, I'm just thinking...
I think you would want that.
Yeah, I think so.
Tom, and I'd have you, I'd hire you as our chauffeur.
I'd be the copilot. No, no, I wouldn't.
No, 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 you don't wanna miss a second.
That's all I've got to say.
He's a terrible driver. You wouldn't want him to drive.
He's forbidden from driving village vehicles.
Uh, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay, bring him by.
Thanks. Anybody else in the third row? Fourth row? Back row? Anybody at all? Nobody? Scott, would you like to say anything? No, it's up to you, I mean.
Your department has it. Scott McLennan, Fire Chief. The only thing I would bring up about having a firehouse at the new Harriman train station, and you said maybe having a joint venture with Monroe. You know, Harriman's got that brand-new firehouse there. The Monroe Fire District is having the same issue with Harriman that we're having with Central Valley. They don't get members, and the fire trucks don't go out the door. They spent, I don't know how much money on a brand-new firehouse, and pretty much, it's underutilized. So, and it gets to, you know, reaching out to everybody in our area, the volunteer fire service is in big trouble. Volunteerism, you know, overall, not just fire service, the, the ambulance service sees the same thing, is down. People don't volunteer. Charlie said himself, people are moving into town, moving into these projects. They work in the city, they come home, they do their thing with their family, and they go to bed and go back to the city. They're not coming out and doing a hundred and some hours in New York State, you know, classes to get their interior firefighter. They're not going to classes to become EMTs and paramedics, because they're, they have their life, so. I think we're gonna, we're running into the same problem. So, putting a, a station down there just really probably makes no sense at this point, because, I mean, we've proven it over and over. Look at most of the developments in town. Most people are not joining the fire department or the ambulance corps. I mean, the same people have been here for, for years. I know the guys in the back row from Central Valley, most of them have been here quite a while. Myself, I've been here forty years. And, you know, I see a big turnover. I see hundreds of people come in the door and go out the door and not, not stay a long time. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
You're absolutely right, Scott. Recruitment and retention in emergency services, other than paid police departments or paid fire departments down south, is terrible, and there is no silver bullet. There's no magic fix for that. It's a real problem. People are spending more and more time working first and second jobs, dual-income households. You know, it's, it's a huge issue. It really is.
Well, I'll comment on that, too. We see this coming. I mean, we've had meetings with the ambulance corps. Tim and I and, and other elected officials, you know, were looking at this, these potential problems coming down with them. Same problems coming down with the fire department. I mean, you know, we're juggling things around, trying to figure out what to do, and, you know, the reality of it is, it's gonna cost us a boatload of money in the future, and that's the reality of it. Now, now, the TOD down there is supposed to be like fifteen hundred units, so there's gonna be a lot of ratables coming down there. We're gonna have some hotels coming into Woodbury. That's gonna be more ratables, and guess what? These ratables are gonna be scoffed up going towards emergency services, because we're gonna, I mean, I don't know when that day's gonna come, but that day is coming. And I think a lot of this, the requirements put on volunteer firemen and, and people volunteer for the ambulance, is that the unions want everybody to be a full-time paid employee, so they could be in a union, and it makes the union stronger. That's the goal of, of the unions, in my opinion. Whether it's right or wrong, that's where they're moving, and that's what's gonna happen to us. So, eventually, I don't know if it's two years down the road, I don't know if it's five years, ten years, but eventually, we're gonna have to make some big decisions, and unfortunately, I think they're gonna come sooner than later, so.
I think the issue with, like you said, Scott, are the training requirements. I mean, you know, firefighter one is about a hundred and thirty hours now? It used to be like thirty hours, you know, twenty years ago. It's, it's crazy, and EMT is, depending on the class, anywhere between a hundred fifty, a hundred ninety hours. Paramedic is like two thousand hours now. Nobody has the time to do that anymore, and then you gotta maintain the continuing education, seventy-two hours in three years for EMS. And fire, you constantly have to go for new training, especially to get to the officer ranks. It's very difficult, and the requirements that are in the bylaws for officers in the fire department are not there just as arbitrary answers or arbitrary entries in a, in a set of bylaws. They're there for the protection of mostly the members, as far as I'm concerned, but also fire, also property and life of the residents, so. There's a lot of issues. There really is, and it's not unique to Woodbury, as you said.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Regarding...
Anything. Well, I'm still, to public comment. Anybody else in the audience before I wrap this up? Okay, then I'm gonna move to Buddy, you have anything?
Yeah, I just got a, a couple of things. First, I want to congratulate Chris Gerver for being appointed to the planning board, and Dennis Tenny, who's also present as fire police. I want to mention, there's been a lot of talk with the, with the new tax law and the, about New York State proposing to make some kind of accommodations where taxpayers could transfer instead, in lieu of paying their property taxes, pay into funds that would be considered as charitable donations. And I think everybody needs to be aware that the IRS is gonna have the last say on this, and the IRS has just recently issued guidance, making it very clear that they are not going to accept these workarounds that states like New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut are, are trying to do in lieu of easing the tax burden on their residents. So, just to read to you real quick here, that the IRS says, in response, "Some state legislatures are considering adopted legislative proposals that would allow taxpayers to make transfers to funds controlled by state or local governments, or other transferies specified by the state in exchange for credits against state or local taxes that the taxpayers required to pay." The aim of these proposals is to allow taxpayers to characterize such transfers as fully deductible charitable contributions for federal tax purposes, while using the same transfers to satisfy state or local tax liabilities. Despite these state efforts to circumvent the new statutory limitation on state and local tax deductions, taxpayers should be mindful that federal law controls the proper characterization of payments for federal tax income purposes. So, the IRS is making it very clear to Governor Cuomo and Governor Murphy in New Jersey, and to all our residents, that these gains are not gonna work, and these charitable deductions for our property taxes are not gonna be recognized by the IRS, so I want everybody to be aware of that and to be, don't be hoping for that tax break from Governor Cuomo, because it's not coming. And so, I just wanted to thank everybody, and anybody who's here, and everybody who was involved in the, the Fight for Mike fundraiser that was held last Saturday at St. Pat's Gym. As a member of the Woodbury Community Association, in conjunction with the Highland Mills Fire Company, the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce, the Knights of Columbus, and I believe the Woodbury Lions Club. We had a great turnout. We served a ton of food. There was a lot of people there. And from the estimates, I was told last night, they raised somewhere just under fourteen thousand dollars, or around fourteen, a little over fourteen thousand dollars for the Hanson family, which, which was really a great effort, and I wanna thank everybody that was involved with that. That's it.
Thank you, Buddy. Neil?
I don't have anything.
I have nothing.
Tim?
I'm good.
Desiree?
I just want to remind everybody that Sunday is the farmer's market. Neil, what time is that?
Noon to three, isn't it?
Ten to three.
No, ten to three.
In Central Valley on Valley Avenue. So, the third week. I understand it's getting bigger and better each week. Except for the cheese lady won't be here this week. She's over there every other week, right? But come on out, down to Valley Avenue, ten to three, Woodbury Farmer's Market, sponsored by the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce. That's all I got.
Sounds like a radio program.
Yeah, I, I went down to the farmer's market last week, and I, I like the garlic pickles, so I recommend them. I want to thank the Central Valley Fire Company for coming here tonight. I want to congratulate Chris Gerver for being appointed to the planning board, and I want to thank everybody who came to tonight's meeting, because it's nice to have an audience. And I wish everybody, summer's coming into play now. I heard fathers, I want to wish everybody Happy Father's Day. We forgot to do that for the mothers, and we're never gonna live that down, so I want to wish all the fathers Happy Father's Day. But I heard it's gonna be extremely warm on Sunday. It's gonna be summer-like, so I want all the fathers to take it easy, relax. That's all I have tonight, and I want to thank everybody, and I'd like a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.